Evening.
It's not lies, it's frozen.
No.
Right, close that down.
You're going to sing this together then? Is that frozen? Carolyn, make you feel comfortable being frozen here. Welcome back.
Nice to see you back.
Right, we are live. Thank you, Paul. Right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the eight-point meeting of Buckinghamshire Council Planning Committee. Before we start the meeting, we do have a public session for fifteen minutes. We do have members of the public here who'd like to speak. Can you just introduce or stand up and introduce yourself? What do you have after fifteen minutes if you want to?
Oh, God, no. I'm John Dane Tobbey and I live at twenty-one Woodlands Crescent. And I'm the resident planning officer, which is Tommy. I represent the city on the fence, which has been the red team. So it does. It's on my boundary base, it affects my house. I'm kind of here because there has been quite a few objections. I've kind of had to speak with the majority of the street. The photos do show that it does really pay a bit of a nuisance on my building. But also it's not in keeping with the rest of the street. And what it does do is restrict the street. So generally in the summer, the kids on the street do play. Now, we're not allowing our kids to do that because we nearly run a kid over because of this fence. I did put some photos on there which showed how far my partner has to move off of our drive to be able to see what's coming down the street. And we actually melt over the path and nearly onto the road before we can see what's going on. We also keep a good eye on the rest of the street because a lot of people are around me and they do need help. So I'm the first person to sound like a street with snow. And I think it's struggling the whole street of the snow to let everyone get out and do their shopping. So they found that we've got a business deal to help. And so we do like to keep an eye on everyone that's around us. And now we can't see the left-hand side of the street to help out there. It really is a struggle and I do feel that it is way too high or front yard. There are still defenders on the street that are placard defenders. So they don't cause any distance in any way because the road isn't as close to their property as our property is to these roads. So that's basically why I'm here today because we didn't know this planning was going ahead until I saw Catherine in there. Literally, when I had a ten-minute window, no, did I skip her? Catherine was taking some photos. So I asked, what's going on? And she said, there was no notice on the street. I went up last week, noticed it. And in that week, the street had found out what's happened and they made their objections. An nuisance of offence is not, it's not, it's not a big offence, but it is a big offence, but it's quite a lot of hair on the street. So whatever you decide, please make it go.
Don't sit on the fence.
Would a lower fence could accept?
Yeah, absolutely. If you can keep it, we can keep it if the rest of the street where there's like a three-foot fence on the front. Some people have edges which are like three foot. If you look at all of the rest of the street, there's little brick walls like two foot. I'd say a three-foot fence is fine because we can still see over that fence of what's coming. But that fence, we can't.
Yeah, I did drive there this morning and have a look. I know what you're up against.
Yeah, if we blossom with the sun comes into the front, you know, and that is an issue for us. It's made our life look like we're going to get the sun coming in front of us, you know. The main thing is safety. We nearly hit a truck. My partner, if I couldn't run in on a scooter or a bike, we'd have a difficult station. That's definitely one hundred percent.
Any councillors that have got questions? Councillor Donovan, if you would like to ask you something?
Thank you, Chairman. And have you fallen out with your neighbours? Because when I saw the pictures, the first thing I thought of was, has there been an argument? Because it looks just so big and obtrusive and...
It's on my side as well, because what it is. How's it going to fall out? No, his dad threatened me about six months ago, well, actually longer. They objected to my plaque door. Which was a lawful application. They objected to the front, I think we've got the top there. If you can see from the picture, you can, my dormer is, yeah, that's one? Yes. That's it. If he had objected to the front, I might not have got it planned in it. But it is moving, keeping with the street and nice. But he objected to the back and since then he's not spoken to me. And literally not spoken to. I've not spoken to him. When it went through, we've not spoken. I don't know what we've done. We're a family. We've got two kids and my partner lives there, so we're a lot noisy or anything like that. Jack might be a little bit of a handful at the time, but that's about it. So I don't, I don't talk to him. So I don't know. I talked to his partner and she seems very nice and she's got a lot of business as well. No, I don't, I don't. He's never really been chatting since the day he moved in, only unless last thing he said to me when we spoke, I was finishing my driveway. He said, don't put anything down that side without affecting. Because I'm going to have a little retaining wall, two skids wide to keep my vehicles safe. So people can't drive off of the road. So I didn't finish my driveway so that he could do that. I nearly put that in.
Anyone else? Councillor Harvey?
There is a law called the Party Walk Act. Yes. Where you're going to abandon between two properties. You're meant to consult with the other property and let them know what's going on and so on. Yeah, but what you're saying, that didn't happen. No, it's all right. You might have some reports under that law. Yeah. Whatever, we'll give away the planning because we know we're not the planning authority. We don't make this fully advice. Yeah. But there is the Party Walk Act, it does exist. And I think there are measures within that that people can invoke in a situation like yours.
Yeah, so it was a change before, when we bought the property. I bought his deeds so I could check it. In his deeds, it says that he can't do what's done.
Oh, there's a code system on the deeds?
Yeah, well, so it says he can't. Because I bought, I read my deeds, of course, these are more difficult. So I bought his deeds as well.
Please, I'm going to have to go out for someone's name.
I had to forward it apart to Kirsty.
Yeah, I'm doing it. It's in the report.
Oh, is it now?
And other ones of the comments that mention the red deeds.
So it says, the transferee shall not become entitled to any right of light or air reason of right or air of anyone as much as to interfere with any manner of free use of the joint in neighbouring of the transferee for building or any other the last bit.
That says it all. Thank you very much. Councillor Stutchby?
I'm going to comment on planning, but those sort of informations are correct legal information. It could be, can I sit on planning as well? Comment on your application. But you may wish to, if you are making any comments, you need to make sure that information is available to the officer who's determining it. And because...
Mr. Tucker, he's made a very important comment on the website.
You have. I mean, I haven't seen it, I apologise, but you need to make sure that information because you, whether it will go under delegated powers or go to committee, we don't know nowadays. But, but I won't comment on your application, but I think I advise you to make sure that it's, it's, it information's available.
Yeah, I've referenced, I've referenced that, that statement in, in my objection. So hopefully, if you do need a copy, I can email over a copy of the deed.
We won't come here.
Okay.
You need to make sure that the planning officer who's designated to do the application is aware of that. Because they can't actually Buckinghamshire Council, because they are the though I sit here, I don't comment on planning applications for other reasons. But, but you do need to make sure that the planning officer is aware of those matters because they are legal matters and, and, and they may be a determining factor in the way they look at something. I don't know, I'm not the planning officer. I have heard that type of thing come of the meetings down in the Ayrshire over there.
We have contacted Ayrshire and highways and we're not concerned. Yeah, then no one's responded as of yet. And I've sent a copy of the deed as well.
Yeah, please, Councillor Donovan, here.
So this is on your land?
That is Sylvia's.
Just not take that down?
That wasn't, no, that's Sylvia's. That is, that's next door. So mine's, that's the right-hand side. My property is twenty-one, that's twenty-five, and Dan's is twenty-three. So the right-hand side we're looking at, that house there is Sylvia's.
That's the planning officer's.
So is that, Councillor? Is that yours?
This is my house.
The dormer.
This is Dan's house and that's Sylvia's house.
Okay, all right. So this is yours?
That's the fence that he's put up and he's put it on, on his side, right on the right just next to the park because there is a bunch of walls we've got to separate up. He has put it in the white flats. There is a foot there with Kirsty's car where she has tried to drive across the path. Hope you can see that.
Mr. Tubby, just, just contact, I won't say the officer's name.
That is what he's put on the website for this.
Oh, so you've told him?
Yeah, I've put it up the website.
Okay, so, yeah.
It's all there.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Tubby, I wanted to say, what I'll do, the committers agreement, we'll bring that item four once we've done the housekeeping. So you'll give up him to stay for the
I'll leave you guys too much.
Okay, right. You can rush over and watch it. Thank you, thank you very much for coming and telling us about it. And I know that you and Catherine had a good discussion on site. So thank you for that.
And all the, all your other photographs are available to show members on Big Street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Right, no other members of the public? So moving on to the meeting item one, apologies for absence.
There isn't any apology to apply?
The full house. Item two, declarations of interest.
Robin, your usual declaration of interest, that I'm going to comment on planning case, in case by any misfortune, we actually have a planning meeting.
Just for the benefit of members of the public who might be watching, Robin is obviously a Shire councillor. So he has a dual role on the local planning authority committee and also here at Buckinghamshire Council. Don't harm us. Thank you. Minutes of the last meeting, it's held on the seventh of March. They have already been received at the full council. Are we agreed? As can be signed. Thank you very much. Item four, Buckingham neighbourhood plan, Bakuhamshire local plan. There are notes attached from the Buckingham Labour Plan Working Group, which met on the twenty-third of March. Councillor Stutchby?
Can I just advise that we that my view is that as you're conducting the neighbourhood plan and as we thank you, say we, we look at and we contact highways and to make sure that they're aware of the fact that we're reviewing the neighbourhood plan. And we ask highways for any issue and what their plans are in the area and why they're drafting a plan because if they do something radical that we are not aware of, why they're drafting a plan, it will cost us money. And, and, and we would have to redraw it. So I think we should, my voice is that we come to highways and ask them for any long-term plans that they've got regarding highways which may impinge on a local flat. I think that's a reasonable question for us to ask.
Absolutely.
Members in agreement with that? Councillor Harvey?
Just quickly, I thought I'd give my apologies, but I can't find the record of it.
In that case, I'm sure that you did my apologies. I wrote the notes in the background.
I'm sure I missed it. I've got my apologies, I've got my apologies there, John, but I've got the record where I actually made them.
Thank you very much for that, Robin. So item number five, then, action reports. Item five-one to receive. It's on the attached list. There are some verbal updates. Trees, we have a meeting later. Town Clerk is going to report on the progress. We can read that perhaps until we do the tree item. Highways response, that's on the agenda as well. Walnut Drive is on the agenda. Odd Fellows Hall. Councillor Stutchby has forwarded to for action. Robin, anything to report on that?
Well, only that I understand Odd Fellows Hall unfortunately has been granted planning and which means that we are in a situation where the officer has done it under delicate powers and all the points which were raised by well-meaning people have been totally disregarded and it's been given planning consent which leaves the poor householder with the situation where I understand things aren't going as well as they should be without saying what's happened. And so that's something which is quite concerning. I'm not sure at this point whether they've even notified the local members being because it's in, it'd be Warren, Howard and Aidy, so I'm not even sure whether they've notified. If they haven't notified them, that's really bad and because it was contentious and was was bad. So I, I'm on that, on the other stuff on the action list, some of it's on the agenda.
Yeah, Catherine will give us some update with a couple of more information.
Yeah, the approval is of the variation to the original approval to move the skylights down in the roof. Now, they are therefore directly opposite the neighbours' bedroom. And there also somewhat unnerving, she sent the photograph this afternoon taken from her kitchen window of a gentleman preparing to shower after work. Yes, girl. So she's not pleased. But they have amended plans which show that they're going to raise the windows a whole four inches further up the roof. As I've got a very nice photograph in my file for the application that she took from her bedroom window of the gentleman actually making the hole to make the skylight. And it's on, directly on the same level. But that's, that's it. Well, I have, I have forwarded the approval notice to Councillor Harvey because we had commented. And I don't know whether they bothered to tell their own members. So I thought I would.
I'm sure he'll be really pleased when he receives that. He maybe hasn't been told.
Well, this, of course, will be, it came in too late for this agenda, so it will be reported to the next meeting, although it's on the action list. But we'll give us all the more at the next meeting. Thank you.
We've got action reports, I see. I give you a verbal update on the archaeology.
We haven't finished the first side yet.
I'm still, still on the actual list.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on action list?
Yes.
Sorry, Councillor Harvey?
The care home access. Since we last met, a barrier, not barrier, curb has been put down. So as you walk down the path through the trees, there are now three obstacles from that path. There was the temporary one that was put in when they were doing all the building work. I'll be carrying that, it goes next to the recycling bins. There's the original one which stopped short of what it used to, which now goes straight into the kind of in, in and out of the actual care home, but doesn't go anywhere else beyond that. Whereas it seems to suggest you walk into the car parking spaces opposite. And then there's this curve which will guide you to walk ninety degrees into the main entrance to the car park. You know, the standard car park. But again, it doesn't take you anywhere at that point either. I think it's enormously confusing. I don't think it's very accessible for people with disabilities. And I'm just, I'm very concerned that it's going to be left like that without any apparent guidance for pedestrians that they can cross that corner safely. And the curb is probably now adding an extra hazard for people, for people with sight problems. But they might then trouble up. Who's planning this? Who's designing this? Where is the plan? Are they just making it up as they go along? I'm very concerned about it.
In fact, as you can see on the action list, it does say that this will be reviewed after the care home is open. I'm aware they've had an open day this weekend, but it's still a work in progress as you will see tonight.
Aidy's now open.
They're actually, it's a, they're all
The front work for them, is they open now?
We have the residents' work moving in on Wednesday. There's still work going on the site. There's still work going on the apartments. And they don't know when they're finished. And so I can't comment on the road layout or anything. I'm, I'm, I'm there to cook meals, so. I don't, I don't.
Well, which didn't know you were going to write it, did you?
No, I'm just saying, saying.
No, I just asked to see if it was open, like.
I had previously declared an interest in this, of course.
So that is, that was what we agree as a, as a committee, that we would review it after the care home is open. So many, just to wait, wait for the next
Now, as far as, as I can see, the curb that John is referring to is protecting people using the ticket machine, which is now back in, back in availability again, which it wasn't doing much of the building works. So there's, there's a better path and then there's a basic curve to as you can see it, and D marks at that bit's pavement and and the yeah, not very good.
Thank you for that information, Councillor. Councillor Stutchby?
I, I think it's reasonable to ask questions in detail as it's progressing. I think that, that the car park obviously was changing its operation at different points to give people access to the car park. It's changing fees. I think it, what we can do is just ask and probably take it away and just ask what, what the long-term plans on the permanent entrances. I think the other thing that we were going to do is, which I think fore-council had agreed or I'm, it's agreed or we'd agreed, that we were going to review it when it's open, finished and in progress so that we could actually see how it all worked. And, yeah, but, but I think the detail of, you know, will that, that, what the one that comes out behind the ticket machines, will that stay be permanent, temporary? I think that sort of, it might be something worth asking, but I, I think it will probably in the next week revert back to what it's going to be and then we'll be reviewing what it is rather than what it was. So, but I did go in there, I think it's beyond my pocket. I don't think I'll be moving in next week. Although the food was very nice, I did eat a lot of it. But I won't be moving in next week, so.
Thank you, Robin. Right, anything else on that? Okay, nineteen bridge three decision to receive and discuss the replies under appendix C. You will recall, we expressed concern, the highways appeared not to have taken account of all the road, road features around the entrance to the application for dry cleaners and takeaway. There has been that reply back from Joe Thornton, who's the highways manager Buckinghamshire Council. They just basically say, well, we were just following our guidelines and tick boxes and Catherine, any comment on that as you go after the original letter?
Nothing to say really. If I go in by her guidelines, we'll just have to be very careful.
Yeah, she did finish off saying that, you know, we're still obviously as a consultant entitled to raise any problems we think there are. On this one, we haven't agreed, but of course it was refused anyway. That may, may not be the subject.
TBT. Yeah.
Right, thank you. Item five-three, West End Farm Archaeology, to receive a verbal report from Councillor Stutchby.
Yeah, and we, I think we've all been following this up for quite a number of years now. Well, I have had a response from the officers, I think it was last week, saying that they are now in a, in a much more permanent position where they're looking at getting the position where they're talking about getting the costs for doing the archaeology and, and moving it forward. I think that's about reading the email that's on the front of me. And that it was more positive than we've been for a long time. And they are in discussions with the company and are going back to discussions with the other company. And of course, within all that, there are some legal questions. But I think that I can say fairly that myself and archaeology happen as always, as ever, across it here. So basically, network, I think it's network archaeology, they'll talk to them. And they look like they're going to be in a position to get some of the information out of it for the archaeology. So I hope in the next time we come back, it will be about, I've, I've asked for an update and when we will report, future report we may publicly. Now, we have been following this up, I think, for three years. And, and to be fair, I think it got lost within the changeovers of the council and the fact that they decided not to pursue their application. But it looks like after going to Cabinet, which we asked, one was asked to do, that things are now actually moving forward. So I'm hoping that that will be the thing. We might actually one day find out if, you know, age of the burials, the nature of them and what timeframe they fit in in Buckinghamshire. So I think it would be I, I've got the officer's name here. It, it, we've got the report committee. If you, if you allow through the clerk to write back to the officer to thank her for what work she's done on it, because quite often officers work really silently in the background and don't get appreciation. And that I've informed you and that we're, and a note of what it is to be circulated to the members of the email, so you're aware of it. And I'd ask that we write and thank them for their time because it's not easy. It's legal difficulties and and, and they have received more than their fair weight of emails from me over the past three years. And, and for that, they need all the thanks they can possibly get. Anybody who's read one of my emails. Yeah, no, for you. Yes.
Thank you, Robin. Just to let members know, Robin has been keeping me in the email train throughout, so thank you for that. So we're aware of what's going on. Hopefully we'll get some by soon. Item five-four, to receive information, highway obligations pages from the Walnut Drive Main and Orton's section one oh six agreement. It's attached there and as you can see, it's not a very particularly attractive document. Number of handwritten and signature changes to it, which I, I find quite extraordinary. A development of this size, something couldn't actually be bothered to just retype the relevant clauses. The best part of it is, of course, they have moved the pedestrian crossing further down Stratford Road outside Buckingham Athletic. They still haven't got the crosshatched, keep clear markings junction, right? They say it's to assist bu- buses exiting the high street. It's not, it's to assist buses joining the high street from the bus station. But I think having got to this point, probably just need to let it apply. Anyone any comments on that, Carolyn?
No, the action book are not being expressed here, reviewing it all and, and considering judicial review.
Yeah, it was all very much thrown at everyone, wasn't it?
It was, absolutely. Lacking ways, I'm actually took it up speed.
Councillor Harvey?
Do we know, because there was this question mark about whether the Shire councillors could call it in?
Yes.
Or not? It wasn't called in, the decision has been taken. Was it not called in?
Was it not called in because it wasn't constitutional for the shy councillors to call it in? Or were there other reasons? Do we know?
The business manager and chair consulted together and decided that it didn't need to be called in. Oh, that's the way it is down. I mean, apart from that one, we haven't actually finished a committee meeting yet.
Carolyn, again?
I was just going to add to that to say that, um, the question was posed to, uh, a legal advisor at the Chamber of, about this particular aspect of calling it in and whether it was um, denying the constitution or not. And it does appear that, like all legal jurisdictions, things, um, you can interpret those one way or the other. And that the council was probably, um, interpreting it in a way that would be considered correct because it had been determined. But, um, it was a moot point and, and the legal advisor took two letters to make that point.
Thank you. Robin?
Yeah. The application had a very long run into its determination. Actually, I think started, um, its journey with the district council. Um, and it, it then went through the shadow authority into the year of, of no elections with the Buckinghamshire Council. Um, in all those times, the constitution for the, um, the, um, Buckinghamshire Council went to one meeting, which was an extraordinary meeting of the shadow authority. Um, and there was only one person asked any questions on the constitution at all and you were looking at him. Um, no other councillor at that meeting, if it's a webcast still available, asked any questions of the constitution whatsoever. And there was two hundred and four of them at the time. And, um, and so the constitution was what I call a, uh, in my view, was a cut and paste constitution from four or five authorities. I think the constitution needs to evolve. I am really concerned that, that you have a constitution with statutory planning committee, which leaves the chairman and the, um, business manager to be so, um, decisive in, in a decision. Because it rather means that the planning committee is only allowed to meet after some more important people have decided whether they're able to meet. Which I don't think it will. This is one, um, really testing thing for Buckingham. And the thing that we have to consider, and this is something which needs to be said. There was, there was targets to hit on this politically. And, and politically, and I will be political in this because it is political. The first target was when these matters were going through, because it's linked with the Vale Plan. The Vale Plan went through the cabinet. There was an opportunity there to challenge it. Because the Vale Plan gives it legal weight and that's what they used to determine it in the first place. So that wasn't challenged. And then the other points, it could have been challenged again, um, at council. Um, the Buckinghamshire, um, council agreed the Vale Plan. Very few people spoke, um, um, about it. And I did. Um, I said a few words about what I thought it was. It's a republic record and they were polite, but meaningful. Um, so we missed that and then we call it in, which we could have suggested that if we had better understood the situation on the application and it had come to here, because it didn't come to here, did it? It, it went quite rightly to May's Morton Parish Council. We would have, because we were already getting lined up to call things in. I'm not a hundred percent sure the local members were fully aware that the application was processing through. Um, and it didn't get an early call in. It was called in on this other section that, that three members can call an application in as, as Caroline says, that at that point, eh, they deemed that it wasn't, um, substantive. But if we need to stand up by our beds and be really careful going this, because of course, one day there'll be an application in South Ploughs as contentious as this is. And I could imagine then all wheels will come off all barriers. And, um, and it'll get the attention it jolly well deserves. What I'm worried about is that this application is in North Buckinghamshire. And the, the nature of a strategic planning committee is that, um, it's made up of the whole Buckinghamshire. And I did question when this is going through, would it come to the local planning committee? Because it says in the, in the constitution that anything, I think it's under something, can come to the, um, local planning committee, but it was deemed to go to the strategic planning committee, which meant the decision for this all the way along has been taken through the strategic planning committee. Where up to four hundred houses can go to the local area planning committee. I say this because we will be determining an application which I have called in um, to committee, so we can do this all again, um, for the May's Morton Road, which because the chairman and, and the chairman at the time, um, we, we called that in. So we're going to go through this argument again. But we have to live and learn and, and any money spent on fighting the council will be defended, I expect, rigorously. Um, because that's what they will do, because they have to defend themselves against the, um, developer, I expect. So we do have to live and learn and start marking down in our pens what doing. And I think it does beg of belief that we do need to, eh, someone who's got a legal brain, which isn't mine, needs to look at that constitution and compare it to other similar authorities. Whether such power is left in such individuals' hands to determine whether an application should go to committee and whether that, it's, whether it's a calling. Because that worries me. Because I wouldn't feel comfortable if I was the chair of anything, having that much power placed upon myself to determine something when you can easily be influenced by the advanced knowledge of an officer. I'm sorry if that's very long, but it, it is a very serious issue. We do need to be minded to this because this is something.
Thank you, Robin. That's three minutes. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Uh, councillor, do you?
Thank you. Um, it's not really about all that drive. It's just that there's discussion that we're having now about, um, the business manager and the chairman, um, determining applications. We have already been over this when, when we first got a look at the constitution. And I know there's some new members on the table now, but this, the, this was our argument at the time. Um, that, you know, it's going to come down to a few people rather than, um, a group that was, that's been elected, um, to make decisions that could affect a lot of people. So we've already had this.
Exactly what we forecasted. Yeah. Thank you very much. Um. Councillor Harvey? Um, I think I have difficulty hearing you at the last. I'm sorry, but, yeah, thank you.
I just want to say, I told you so, because when I blogged about this a couple of years ago, I was roundly criticised for being too pessimistic. Those were not the words I put. So currently, any one of the local U B C councillors who calls us in, the new arrangement will mean that only one councillor, the chair of the local, um, committee, has that decision, um, to, to consider. Everything must be followed through them as the other local U B C councillors would have had their democratic wings early clipped. Moreover, the chief planning officer is to be given the prime decision making role deciding whether a planning application is to be called in or not. This means that the council will no longer be a member led when it comes to local decisions. Is this democracy? I wrote that a year and a half ago and it's come true, hasn't it?
Councillor Davis, are you willing to speak?
I'm, I'm just, just going to say it's, it's setting, um, a dreadful precedent, really, isn't it?
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Thank you. Right, um, we can move on to planning applications. You just made with members of information, the next Buckinghamshire Council, North Buckinghamshire Planning Area Committee meetings are this Wednesday, April sixth, on May the fourth, Buckinghamshire Council, Councillor Touchbridge sits on strategic sites committees. Thursdays twenty first of April, twelfth of May. Nothing on those.
Um, John, maybe we have it to jam for twenty first of April, we might get one soon that's not there.
Thank you, Catherine. Um, Catherine's gone through all the planning applications and made comments on them. You've all seen those, I'm sure. We'll start the first one, um, which is twenty three dead, built close on the Badgers Estate. Um, it was, it has been, had the notices put up on the sixteenth of March. There was a slight amendment to it on roof lights, but nothing affects it hugely. It's one that neighbour objection, that the neighbour who lives behind it, um, has objected to the overbearing size of the extension. His loss of privacy, the risk of flooding, um, if they put a patio in rather than keep what will be a rest form along. And he's also noted that he's got a tree that could possibly fall onto this extension, even though they've ticked, there were no trees nearby the extension. Um, anyone would like to speak on this? Karen?
Yes, um, well, the society did think this is open development. And I think the, uh, loss of immunity to neighbours is quite considerable given the nature of the terrace itself. Uh, and I noted the neighbour's objection from the back view as well. I gather it's slightly raised. Um, do you feel close for Kingfisher? Flooding is a potential hazard, certainly.
Thank you. Any other members like to speak on it? If what the Buckingham society said, if people are in agreement with that, then perhaps we should, uh, object it on, on those grounds.
Yeah, agree.
Does that object and call in or?
We're going to hold fire and.
Yeah, we'd object first. Right, so all those are safe with objecting. That's, that's unanimous, because Robin's, uh, well, apart from, yeah, Robin's staying on topic. Yeah, thank you very much. Um, item two, Ring Road Garage, probably Gorkot Road Roundabout. Uh, this is just a replacement of some signs. Highways has no objection provided they are all non-illuminated and non-reflective. It's in Catherine's pictures. Everyone happy with that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, item three, right, we have Mr Tupperby in earlier, talking about twenty three Woodlands Crescent, which is just off Morton Road. For those of you who don't know it, there are, as of this afternoon, thirteen objections, all from neighbours in Woodlands Crescent. Um, they're all complaining much of the same thing. It's, uh, just dispensing, spoiling the street scene, it's cutting out natural light for some of the immediate neighbours. And there's a danger to pedestrians and particularly to children, as this is a route to, um, Buckingham Primary School. Councillor Harvey?
Yeah, more than happy to recommend that we oppose this one.
Thank you. Then second of that, thank you, Councillor Davis. Anyone wish to speak on it? So for all those reasons, um, we oppose it. Catherine's got the. Councillor Harvey, sorry.
Just, Karen, what is the planning reason or reasons that we're objecting to it on?
Street scene.
Um. In the least, it's not allowed.
Lost, lost the main seat.
Yeah, lost the natural light, danger to.
And it's not allowed in the least.
I'd just make the point that we did actually raise an enforcement on this, I think in twenty eighteen, when they changed the, the large front window to two small ones and although reported it, nothing was ever done, but, uh. So, thank you.
Okay, great, good.
Um, item four then, which is twelve Bonham Close, this is in London Village. Um, there's no yellow notice for this yet. It's a household application for two-story side extension above an existing garage. Conversion of the garage into habit or accommodation. It is a four-bedroomed house. We'll keep it at four bedrooms. Uh, Catherine, in her notes, pointed out that, um, they will be losing a garage, probably one they couldn't use anyway. Um, so possibility that they might park or want to change one, one of the grass areas to parking. There is certainly parking for two cars though.
Yeah, I think you would just say that, um, I think it's quite correct to point out that the law probably will go for an extra parking space. Um, and it would be a, a loss of immunity, I think, both to that particular property, but also the street itself. And it's probably impossible to make any sort of petition. But perhaps can we suggest that, uh, any further works to the garden should be permeable surface?
Is everyone happy with that? Castle?
And the usual grey water recently, some of the panels to add to the.
Thank you.
Electric car shafts at the point as well, weren't they?
Do you think these things should be standard?
New, new area.
Any, any further offers? Thank you, everybody. You're all, all happy with that, yes? Thank you. Right, um, this is twelve to thirteen Market Hill Revisited. We've had a number of applications over the years for this. Um, all of which today have been refused. Um, this is to convert the floors above Emmon Coe into eight dwellings, flats. Um, first part of the application is external alterations to form new doors and windows to the front and side of rear elevations. Uh, so Emmon Coe giving up, uh, looking at the front of it, the, the extreme left-hand side of, of the shop. Is everyone happy with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no problems with heritage, they, they've said, they put certain conditions on. So the main part is a determination as to whether prior approval is required in respect of transport and highway impact, noise, contamination, flooding and locational consideration, the change of use of floors from retail storage. Um, this is a C O U F N, which is a government initiative that town centre empty properties should be, uh, could be used for housing. Uh, the exception on that appears to be, except in conservation areas. Um, and I'm sure Buckingham society will have a view on that. Just to say highways have got no objection to it. But environmental health note, it's close proximity to the Buckingham Inn next door and the risk of noise and smell for rooms number one and two. Um, Councillor Ralph?
Um, certainly there's a question about rubbish bins or death bags or whatever. Um, and also I think I'm right in saying, um, where do you put your bicycles? Because they talk blandly about bicycle storage, but it would appear you're virtually sticking under your bed as far as I'm concerned. Um, so we need to perhaps explore that in a bit more detail.
Thank you. Karen?
Yes, I think just following up on councillor Ralph's comments, um, there's simply really not enough information. We have no objection to the principle of residential development above residential premises. Um, but the space for refuge is already mentioned. But the, the cycle rate, which I noticed the highways officer says there should be a cycle space for each flat that's not featured. Um, you can't possibly have it in with that, up the narrow stairs. And I was rather astonished to see from the tick box, um, report that they have to do. But they don't seem to take a fire as is relevant because it's below eighteen metres. Uh, I mean, this astonishes me in particular, but I'm sure the society will also pick this up. Um, that there just isn't enough information on these very critical factors when you have people living close together in close quarters, um, and kitchens producing potential fires. It's, it's really quite.
The, the eighteen metres is a figure the government set post Grand Paul.
Yes.
So that's obviously the magic number.
I see, that's the magic number.
When we have raised these, this is before, we have been told by pla- local planning authority that these are dramatic building regulations, that, that's how they'd be dealt with. To keep our nose out of it.
I think as a town, we should be only concerned about if we raise the point.
Yeah. Catherine's also made a number of points about the natural lighting inside the building. Um, there are some voids. Um, it looks like a couple of bedrooms may not have any windows at all. Natural lighting. Um, we, you know, part of our Buckingham labour of plan is that people should have a good quality of light wherever they do.
Yeah.
Councillor Harvey?
Well, it isn't just about quality of light. It's about, if you don't have any windows, then you're going to be turning the light off. And then people will be burning up on cars.
Yeah.
To do that. So, you know, we, we, we objected to the development on the build base, you know, that, that, how it's done there because of, we said that if it wasn't enough light. And again, it would be restricted. I think the same thing should apply here. And I, I think frankly, if the, if, if the grounds of this are limited, I'm not sure we should take a view on it at all to say we're very unhappy. Um, with the lack of light. I'm not sure. I do like the mix of space. There are at least some smaller properties for people starting out or just from a living one day back, back and so on. Glad there is that mix, as I said, hasn't been before. But I think the lack of light is serious. The lack of information even more so.
But of course we can, um, agree that, that we don't have enough information and I'll ask, ask for it to be deferred until we have that information, we can take them.
Yeah.
the deal on that rather than just refuse it or prove it tonight, let's do that. Castle Ralph?
Could we object until we receive further information, which we'll then reconsider? Would that be a slightly stronger?
Yes, that is stronger, if the officer is minded to refuse, then we should be delighted. And if they're not, then do we have more information?
Yeah, we've done that before.
Yeah. Is everyone happy with that? Are you proposing that, Castle Ralph?
Pardon me?
You're proposing?
Yes, I do.
If we could just have a second, as I mentioned. That's, all those in favour, because it's refused all? Yeah, that's unanimous. Thank you. Not overlooking your audience.
I'm fine, it gives you all more chance to speak if I don't.
Item number seven is nineteen Mossford Road, household application for part two, part single-storey side and rear extensions. Noted is the roof is not subservient, but it is rather a quirky roof. In any case, I wonder if the Buckingham Society might have a view on this?
Well, I wasn't at the meeting, but perhaps the Council Ralph would like to just say, I read that the summary was aesthetically unattractive.
Yes, yes.
I think that's a really material reason. I look quite closely at it myself, not too particular.
I think that maybe did my phrase, which is lovely to hear that. But nevertheless, it's quite a fanciful design, but I can't really see a planning reason why not. And in its location, I've got to be reasonable about these things.
Is everyone happy to go with that? Karen?
I would just note that the roof line, and I think Catherine has already pointed that out too, not subservient. And the two properties mirror each other rather nicely from the nineteen thirties style. So it does involve the street scene, I think not to this extent, but it is worth just noting that there will be no longer some matching appearance from the front.
Thank you. Castle Ralph, I think Capstone.
I certainly concur with all that, but I would draw everybody's attention to the photograph of the front elevation of the site generally. There is a very large and overbearing mismatch on the other side of the house, so it shoots our fox a bit, doesn't it?
Yeah. Capstone?
That was the point I was going to make, with the dorm windows and a really quite huge extension that's been put on what looks like the twin or the triplet of the houses.
So basically, no objections, so thank you very much. Right, we move on to the big one, item eight, Land West Morton Road, which, as you know, we was deferred, delegated to tonight's meeting on the council. This was first validated in March twenty twenty. What we've got is amended plans tonight, a number of changes, Catherine.
That is just this amendment, that's not the original application.
Creepage, I like to call it.
Could I just hope you save some time, I have to put what Catherine's told us into order. Thank you, Catherine, for your conference report. You all know the history, there's hundred and thirty houses which are the third and final part of the four hundred and ten dwelling Morton Road development. Refused by the Secretary of State in twenty seventeen, has been outside the housing development envelope of Buckingham Labour Plan. But since been reinserted under the new ballot, so we can no longer object to the overall plan. It doesn't mean we can't comment on parts of it with which we disagree, it still falls within our town boundary, so the MP policies are still at the ballot. We should note though, that the developer has included thirty-five percent affordable housing content in line with our policy, not the twenty-five percent of the new ballot. Principle of potential objections is developers continuing failure to acknowledge the Buckingham Design Guidelines, which I know the Buckingham Society will raise tonight. And in fact, Roger Newell is one of those commenters on the four other issues of the travel plan, which is unchanged despite the cancellation of many bus routes since twenty eighteen. And the approval of the nearby hundred and thirty house development, hundred and seventy house development, rather, of Walnut Drive, Mates Morton. Here Buckinghamshire Council has managed to contradict itself, first of all suggesting that eastbound traffic from Mates Morton Three can use College Farm Road to reach the A four two one, but at the same time stating that access via College Farm Road will be restricted under part of the agreement on the Walnut Drive. It also calls for a cycle way down the A four one three into Buckingham Town Centre, believing, as Catherine reminded us, that the town has a gentle deposit. The state road is block paved and many of them have surfaces shared between traffic and pedestrians, both of which go against Buckingham Labour Plan policies and our design guidelines. Affordable housing has no garages, which goes against good planning practice of tenure blindness. Parking is distant from some of the dwellings served. Our overall increase, sorry, our requested increase over ten parking spaces and toilet and shower facilities for the rugby pitch has been ignored. Waste bins are another issue. Buckinghamshire recycling and waste demanding storage space for four weeble bins and a food caddy for each dwelling. Setting a maximum distance which householders should have to wield them, twenty-five metres. Both Buckingham Deputy Town Clerk and Buckinghamshire Parks and Recreation have questioned the design and layout of the BMX pump track. Tamins Valley Police has concerns about lack of surveillance and parking. The Gardens Trust is asking for a wireframe outline to be added to the view from Stowe before it gives its consent, bearing in mind the high pitch roofs in this amended application. Then finally, there's the history of flooding on the site, which will be partly mitigated by detention basins, but the SAS officer asks that a whole life maintenance and management plan for the surface water drainage system is secured by a section one oh six planning agreement. Use of a planning obligation as opposed to a planning condition would help safeguard the maintenance and management of these features over the lifetime of development. Now, given that it's apparent that section one oh six contributions can still be called for, then I would suggest that we get Buckingham Town Council asked for a section one oh six contribution towards local health provisions, something we've been banging on about now. To mitigate for the around five hundred new patients, this element will bring to Buckingham, subject to required proof being provided by the Clinical Commissioning Group. The National Planning Policy Framework is very clear that section one oh six agreements should be agreements between a developer and a local planning authority about measures that the developer must take to reduce that impact on the community. So, sorry to go on a bit, but that's more or less in case, they just got Catherine picked up and addressed last night from our meeting this afternoon. Castle Harvey, again, if you could just drop your mask down when talking, yes?
Okay, to that list, I would add, we need to ensure there's adequate provision of post boxes, which is an issue on the Tindric Road, Mr. And Catherine and I have been talking about that, there are regulations about post boxes being within half a mile of a letter box. So we need to kind of press that. Straight lighting, we do ensure there's adequate straight street lighting. For being particularly in the park area, and obviously some of it's going to be put over to a sports pitch. Does it have to be rugby? What about hockey? What about the say about that? There's the issue of connectivity, the old forty chestnut that we had on Lace Hill. When they didn't put in broadband connections, we need to make sure that's going into this. We need to make sure that any provisions that are about mitigating the impact, like the roundabout re-investiture vote that Robin successfully campaigned for, are put in in time, not just at the end of the development. With regards to how do vergis see, then obviously we would encourage solar panels on all the houses, grey water recycling on all the houses. And electric vehicle points on all the houses, at least as options for people to buy them. So that they will be encouraged to pay for an extra, you know, a few quid, it's all electric vehicle power point on a house that you're about to move into, even though you may not yet, a electric vehicle would be a good thing. And obviously we've mentioned about the pub track. And with regards to the mix of housing, there is no one bed properties being put into the site. That's an oversight, that needs to be rectified, there needs to be a good proportion of one bed properties, so there's two plus bed properties as well.
Yeah, thank you, there is one bungalow we noted, but there's not one bedroom.
There's no one beds.
Karen?
I think there are one beds in the Maisenets, actually.
On the Meads, I couldn't say a lot.
I'm sure there wasn't, or two or three one beds in the Maisenets, but Emily, maybe I'm not, yes, one bed Maisenets. Absolutely echo your summary, Chairman, and Captain Harvey's points about post boxes, lighting and so on. But the lighting issue also brings to mind the points made by the Garden Trust on the effect of landscape. Because those pitches will be lit at night, probably, and no amount of trees in winter is going to hide that. Lighting, casting its pollution, I would go as far as to say, over the countryside beyond it. The applicant has not made any mention of the fact that regardless of the Stowe landscape, there is actually a public right of way that runs alongside close to it, which would be very much affected by it. Imagine the noise when you're riding the horse. Go on about my writing of public right of ways, where they're adjacent to developments like this, there is always noise, and it's really relatively dangerous. And the rest of our comments really refer to the design, which I think Roger has pointed out in a letter, but in particular, I'm horrified to see that all the doors are black, they all have the same diamond motif on the front. And all the barge boards and so forth are white. Sorry, the doors are black, when I say white, the barge boards are white. There's a seam of bricks, there's not an attempt to introduce, or a bit of render, but there's not an attempt to introduce some of the other materials that we see in Buckingham. There really has been no reference to the design guidelines or the distinctiveness of Buckingham, whether they look at guidelines or not. This is a very badly designed development in our view. The houses are ubiquitous, there is really very little variation, and there's certainly should be chimneys on all the houses that face the outside. I think it's quite noticeable when you come down from the padway, you look at the skyline where Lace Hill is. And the chimneys would have made such a difference to the visual appearance. The boundary with the open landscape, they're looking towards Stowe, there should be chimneys on every single house.
Thank you. Castle Ralph?
Could I just add to what Caroline just said, they're talking about concrete tiles as opposed to, you know, the vernacular for Buckingham. And if people are looking out over that, it's extremely unattractive, or in all other respects. I mean, if we can just add that in, I mean, it should be part of the package, long chimneys and so on and so forth. In fact, I think Roger had mentioned that, and the colour of the bricks.
Capstone?
Just, as a point to Captain Harvey's, thinking about the one bedroom, it does say there's six one bedroom flats. And in these areas.
Captain Stush, I'm going to comment on the application, but I first corresponded on this application on the twenty-sixth of the eighth twenty twenty. I also corresponded on November twenty twenty-one. And I've recently corresponded on the application, and the words which, well, paraphrased our conversation, support, Captain Harvey's comments earlier. Haven't yet determined whether this application goes to committee or whether it's going to be done under delegated powers. And I think that I said earlier that we may be discussing that again. So I, whatever decision you make, I can't comment on the case by any chance it actually does come to the planning committee. But I would advise that you ask similar questions about is this going to be done under the constitution? Because it's got history, everybody around this table knows history or discussed it previously. So I hope that you will consider asking whether this is going to go to committee or not, because if this wasn't, that would be two major applications in Buckingham, which have been determined through the constitution, challenging the views. And all the views have been said in various committees about it, but that's what I was saying, just to let you know that I called it in and that's, and I followed it up as wondered. And I think I copied the chairman and the planning clerk into that correspondence, which if you wish to read, you can. But I'm still waiting to admit tonight before doing anything else, thank you.
Thank you all. So, and you asked what the, maybe you can try it?
Thank you. I feel sorry for the people in the established housing estate, because you're going to have another hundred and thirty cars coming out. And those roads aren't, they may be of the right requirement these days, but not to how wide the roads used to need to be this wide. You know, so you get any businesses and parking and you're even more restricted. So on top of all of that, and I noticed there was a turning circle for refuge lorries or large ones. But what about emergency access coming through?
It's part of the thing with shared surface street, there are just no spare space.
Yeah.
And what bothered me in particular was the fact that there are no footways for children from these houses to get to the playground.
Yeah, I was just looking at that, yes. But they share surfaces, so they don't get adopted.
Well...
Because it must be very expensive for Buckinghamshire Council to maintain a block paving type range.
They are unwilling to take it.
When it starts going wrong, you know.
I mean, this, I think this is one of the reasons why my cell's taking so long to get the adoption sorted with the garden.
And to put other services in, as we've just had on Page Hill with Gigget here. You know, yes, they tarmac over and stuff, but when it's block paving, you know, yes, you can take them up, but they never go back down the same way.
Captain Stush?
This is not to do with his application, it's to do with the Laisil, it's not common. Laisil is going to be adopted, he has finally, after, I think I've been talking to them for nine years with it. I'm sure that once the roads are adopted, someone will claim that they achieved it. Within five minutes, somebody will be up there for a photograph, but that took nine years, so, and that was, it's been heavy going, to say the least. And the highways will be adopted, my last correspondent said that, actually, I believe till corrected, they're what they call in the period of snagging, which is quite a long period, to actually make sure they actually conform with it, even when adopted, they have to meet highway standards. So this is an unusual, but that was a particularly bad situation, which we've all discussed. But I'm only saying that because Chairman Catherine referred to that, and I think it's information I might not have shared.
There's lots of block paving in the Tindric roads, apart from this fine road. And there's been discussion about whether that's the best.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen, for your notes. Just one thing, I've got down here, is about, is this the time to ask for a twenty mile an hour speed limit? What does that wait till you've got that agreement? So what we have tonight, you've heard what I read out, which is based on Catherine's notes and discussions we had this afternoon with briefing. And added to that is Roger Newell's very concise comments about the lack of chimneys, about the colours, about the slates, most particularly though about the developer continuing to ignore the Buckingham Design Guidelines, which is very much part of where we are. Then I added the piece at the end of mine about, should we go for a section one oh six agreement, request for health provisions? If we have the others, I don't know if the Town Clerk has any view on that?
That seemed to be sensible, all things considered.
If you don't ask, you don't get. Yeah. I think, um, Councillor Ralph, this afternoon made the point, now perhaps we should start asking for this on all big developments, so they, they get the message.
Yes. Of course, the other consideration is around green spaces, whether we want to make a request for that to be the S106 initiated conversation.
Yeah. So, Councillor.
Just, I just want to challenge the view that this past few rugby years, just because it's next door to the rugby club. We know that the Buckingham Hockey Club would like to return to be in Buckingham. Why shouldn't it be a, a hockey site? Why does it have to be a rugby site? And I know we're popular amongst some members around the table, or indeed with the town. But I do know there are lots of, we have, you know, we have a national class hockey team in Oxford. And they, they would, I'm sure they would love to have a site within town. I think we should, I'd just raise that question.
Councillor Stushford.
Well, I don't think, um, whether we determine what this is, um, for the use of the pitch is really for today. I think we had took an earlier decision, which was agreed by council, which was to allow the town clerk to be able to, which is voted through, to allow the town clerk to be able to discuss, regardless of what we said on applications about section 106. So he doesn't need to ask for us to do that, he, he will automatically do that. Because we don't took the decision at council, this is to do with the application, that's what I'm saying here, indirectly, because we took that decision. So I presume that the town clerk doesn't need our instructions to do that. And the decision about what that pitch would be used for has been discussed, I think in the period when, um, Councilor Harvey was there, I do believe we had visits, um, from organisations. And I do think that was way in advance. And we need to go back and check, because it's nothing to do with the application, what our previous discussions on this site actually said, which were voted on and agreed. I think we need to check that, we need to check whatever we do before we rush into making another decision. If, if it was the, after whatever happens with this site, it comes back. It will then come back to this council to determine what it does with that land, if it was ours, if it was in agreement and, and Berkeley. I think all those discussions come back to that. But whatever we do, we must be competent and competent of what decisions and stuff we've said before. We can't keep trying to change in our minds, because that's the way that we make mistakes. And if we need to change it, we have to be pretty sure why we are changing our view on something. So I, I just say that and, uh, 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 as a comment, because the two things, this isn't a planning issue, whether we take over it. Because that'll come at a later stage. So I hope that helps my clarity of view on this stuff. And I will remember everything that everybody said in all those meetings.
Thank you, Catherine.
I believe the point was that the rugby club wanted junior pitches close to its clubhouse. At the moment, the juniors train on the Major Playfield next to the cricket pitch. And that is divorced from the club itself. It is a club after all. Um, the deal would be that if they were allowed junior pitches on that land, they would maintain them.
Thank you. Councillor, thank you, Councillor Davis.
Yeah, um, on the sports pitches, uh, I think the problem is that the higher in county or status you get in the club, they then require artificial, um, surface and not just a grassy area. So that may be an issue if we were to take it on and all that kind of gives me the guts with that.
Thank you. Councillor Davis.
I was, I was just going to, um, reiterate, um, that the, um, rugby club has grown. Um, there's now, um, quite a large, um, female, um, membership. Um, um, there's, um, girls teams, the signets going from under, over elevens, I think. Um, they're, they're building two full, um, sponsor teams now. Um, so the, the need for pitches and matches has, has increased quite considerably.
Thank you. So we're going to take a vote on this. It sounds, I think it's been going on that we are going for poses for everything that's been said. Who'd like to make a proposal? No, oh, Councillor Ralph.
Well, I would propose that we continue to object to it because it is outside the legal plan. And we should be consistent, we recognise it's within the plan, but it is outside our legal plan. And therefore I think we have no option other than to oppose this. But we recognise, we're not stupid, um, that it's probably going to go through, in which case all the stuff we talked about this evening, we go in as a rider to say we object, but in case it does get avoided, these are things that we would like to be, considered as being part of the prevention development. That's what I would propose.
You're proposing that, maybe I could second it for that, Councillor Ralph, thank you very much.
No, just, just to note that I should be abstaining in case by this thought, and I ever get to determine.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, let's take a vote on that. All those in favour that we oppose this for all the reasons we've spoken about, that is unanimous for the exception of. Councillor Stushford, thank you very much. Um, lots of consultation, three tree applications, all of which I believe were adopted by email. Yeah. So definitely happy with this. Thank you. Uh, planning decisions, item seven, um, couple of those that we opposed. One of them was 37 Wells Street, um, just, just below the church where we objected to the, a new gate. They withdrew the gate, um, so in effect, that's, we got what we wanted there. That, that was then approved. Um, Ayrist Way, we opposed side and rear extensions. We objected to the flat roof on the extension. The officer commented that while the flat roof may not be in keeping with the Buckingham design codes, um, with existing dwelling, it is set back and away from public views, so she didn't have a problem with that. Just looking down further, as we report their land off, Walnut Drive approved. The current practice sign in, at the bottom of Summer House Hill has been refused because it didn't comply with relevant policies. But they said they would approve an acceptable sign if it met guidelines, so, um. Um, then just to mention, um, it's only come in today that Nelson Street, well, end of last week, Nelson Street Convenience Store has had its planning retrospective mission refused for all the advertisements on the front of it. Um, it has been brought to our attention, there may be some coloured flashing lights on the building. I don't know if someone would like to have a look at it sometime.
It was mentioned in the background.
You're not suggesting we go there for a raid, are you, Chairman?
It's cheap, it's cheap beer, huh? It's cheaper than petrol.
Beer is cheaper than petrol, that's a, that's a mind boggling thought, isn't it? I'll give that some consideration, but I'm on antibiotics, so I won't be able to do anything about it.
We know what the chairman's thinking. Isn't Prince Charles, um, running his cow from London White?
Anyway, that's, that's just to note, that has, that has been refused. Um, item seven two, planning inspectorate, an appeal has been lodged against refusal, also in Nelson Street, 32 Nelson Street, for internal works and external rendering and paintwork. We have no objection as long as the heritage officer was satisfied, but he has in fact recommended refusal about the lots of historic fabric and plan form that failed to preserve the architecture and caused less than a bachelor arm to be designated heritage asset. So that is a matter for appeal. Any members who wish to make further comment, the closing date is the 15th of April. We've already made, we made our, we went opposing to the town.
Quite minor alter which, but it involved putting it downstairs too. Which, as it's an ex hub, I'm quite surprised it hasn't already got, but it would be moving a partition and doing some plumbing, but in taking the floor up and things like that. We just thought it was, makes a nice house, you know, and it's the white one, straight opposite Tindrit Road.
So as we didn't oppose it in the first place, we're just leaving it to heritage officers to fight it out with the planning inspector. Thank you. Um, Buckinghamshire Council matters, item eight, receive news of Buckinghamshire Council new documents and any other information from Buckinghamshire Council members present. Councillor Stushford, the floor is yours.
Um, well, just briefly, I went to Cabinet last week, um, to discuss the, um, you, you remember that all of us, um, when we were fighting for improvements on the Tindrit Road development, we all fought way strongly to include a cycleway and convertivity to it. I had a response verbally at the cabinet meeting from the cabinet member. I'm waiting for the written response to that. Um, I believe once I get that, because it was said in the public, I can then circulate that. What was pleasing in one aspect was the cabinet members' acceptance that they got to build the footpath. And there was a discussion around the necessity to discuss, uh, a, a, a material change in the planning considerations, which material change will be service, I believe, though he didn't directly cite it. But, um, is the footpath across the historic ground of the, um, the, the parkland, which is where some rumble as well is. So, and they were discussing that with archaeology to, to, to ascertain what they could do there and it would be a material condition. So though it wasn't what I call a first, um, a, a complete blind in success, it wasn't, um, it wasn't a success in one way, that, that there was a verbal acceptance that, that these things had to be done and a verbal acceptance. So I think that there's a whole range and trunk of things to do with Tindrit Road that it fits into. And I won't go into the other areas tonight, but I think what we do when we get that is bring it back to, to either, uh, um, the chairman, the mayor and the, and, and the chair of planning can discuss where we take it then. Because I think it's quite an important thing that we are all together on trying to, um, get the cycleway and everything put in, because you will recall that we met on the Tindrit Road, um, to discuss the 13 mile an hour limit, which is still, um, the decision has not been made public yet. Um, and so if that decision was retrograde and, and, and negative, this is more prominent, that we get this cycleway in, because the whole point of this date was to, um, when we looked at it and considered it all those years ago in 2015, was to make sure that, that we got some children travelling on the, without going in a car. So that's important. Um, the other matters to do with Buckinghamshire Council, um, we will be going to council, um, unless they term up to say that the motion that's been drafted is not fit in a legal within the constitution. It's been accepted, I think, um, because you will be aware that of all the economics in the country, poverty is going to be a big issue and food poverty is going to be something. So we can see how that goes. Um, I, I'm going to planning meeting this week. I've had a bit to a health meeting the other day, which strangely enough dis連back to planning. Is my understanding, um, is that, um, the Swan Practice section of health is still in, we're still in discussions with them about their correspondence, what it means, because they're irrespective of a planning application and the development going forward. There's legal obligations, the things they have to meet. Um, they have to demonstrate that when there's a change in service, that that change of service doesn't affect on people. So that's working through. I understand that it was discussed at the, um, League Friends, that, that they believe that they've got a financier to finance the building. There's nothing in correspondence anywhere, and there's not a minute for a doctor's surgery to do that. But I understand it was said in the meeting. Whether that is correct, we will find out. But i- if that was, um, that information is correct, it would be the same people who built the camp. Um, that in itself raises a whole band of questions, which I don't think I'll raise tonight. But there are a whole band of interesting questions that raises that. So some things are moving forward, some things are the same. And after tonight's meeting, clearly, um, I need to go back and establish on the Morton Road, whether that comes to committee or not, because it would be quite a shame if you didn't get your opportunity to speak after changing the constitution to allow you to speak personally, changing the constitution with agreement, of course. So I think that's enough.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. You haven't finished yet, because the next item, well, first of all, any questions for our sharp caps that is present? No, thank you, Rob, for that. Um, so the next item, eight one one is Ozil Way. Um, Robin had a Zoom meeting for an hour with, um.
Do you want to?
Waste of moment for planning.
You happy to take them through it, Cameron, and then I'll answer questions?
It's all there, I think members have read it. Is there anything you want to add or? It's, it's quite a long document.
It's quite a long document and, 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 and just for information, they have seen it. Um, they have seen copies of it. It doesn't read particularly encouraging, um, I don't think. Um, the attitude, I think in that document was, um, hard-nosed and fiscally, um, um, driven. Um. I'm of course lucky because fortunate that I could use my position to get a meeting with them. I thought that was my job to do so that I could share my information with you, with yourselves as a Buckinghamshire councillor, because that's my primary job is to work with you. So I think that the whole way that I approached it and the thing that came out of it, um, which worried me, um, they made overturns that they could, um, they were able to make a contribution to build on another development, um, land which is Emberton Way and use a field on Emberton Way which wasn't theirs when I'd asked them about making a contribution to, um, do you remember we discussed some months back, all of us about there's no community hall there? And, and we all discussed it and we were all horrified. Um, so they made the view that, that they would make a contribution which is determined into Emberton Way. Well, that in itself is, um, strange because it's quite, that means that anyone from there to use that thing has got to cross the road to use the facility that they funded. I pointed out to them, they might, um, need to look at the covenant on that land, um, to which they said that they thought that wouldn't be a, um, too difficult thing to do. Um, my worry with it is that when it comes to the section 106 agreement for that land is that there's several things that stare out at me is anything that's written in that section 106 agreement. We need to insist it says Buckingham. Um, and if it says education contributions, we need to insist that it says Buckingham. I believe that they were talking about making a contribution, but we need to make sure it actually says Buckingham. Catherine spotted, we want to go on this, um, when we were doing the Tindrit Road thing and, and, and she picked up, it said Buckinghamshire. And Catherine picked up on the Tindrit Road to make sure it said Buckingham, because the council is Buckinghamshire Council now. So you could get a situation if we don't make sure the section 106 agreements, whatever they are, mention our town, that we could have 500 houses or 420 houses built and they have a contribution for education, which could legally go down to, um, Marlow and build a school. So, um, and because it's within the council, the one council, so that worries me. I came out of the meeting feeling quite, um, um, challenged, but I did, um, I did behave reasonably professional all the way through it and from the table afterwards, but, um, I hope that helps. Any questions, hopefully I'll be able to answer.
Yeah, Councillor Harvey.
Yeah, I think it's a very illuminating document and reading, obviously, Rob, and thank you for that. Um, I'm, I'm curious about this 10% they, they mentioned a couple of times, what that actually means. It's going to be the second one, but what I would say at the end is when you say, surely it means again that their answer was, if we're still involved. I mean, that's the problem, is we've got people negotiating the future of our town. They assume this is a project that they will simply move on from fairly rapidly and they don't really care. Um, and that's where things go wrong, is people are developing this and they don't really care, that's what they're saying. That's why the stuff that we're talking about, really, we have that our control or the size control, because we have investment in the long-term future, they're just simply seeing it. I think they do see that the planning game as a, as a way of earning more money. It seems, I mean, it seems to me that the actual biodiversity and so. It seems to me, it seems to me that the actual biodiversity and so on are basically of interest to them because of the money they could make out of it. That's an impression. But say small enough, it's ten percent.
The ten percent net gain, I really apologize that it was a phrase they they used throughout their conversation, ten percent net gain. I don't know whether that meant community gain or 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 financial gain. Um, because it's a terminology they use and they kept, you know, like these business terms that they they use. So I'd have to um think carefully that I could give you a proper answer on that. And I don't want to say something just for the sake of John. On the point that you made about their continuation, because they made it quite clear, I believe, that they were what I call fa- um, I I would use the term farm in this um development as a as to get it through planning. And at some point, they would pass it on to another developer. But they make their money by, I don't think it's unfair to say so, and town clerk, correct me if I said something that wasn't right, they make their money by making the development more profitable um from a developer's point of view, and then they can sell this on to a developer with much of the policy um bedded in to the advantage of a developer, whoever that he or she may be. So I think you raised some really good points about this, but the planning department doesn't really have a choice in it. Um, they have to deal with the person who's put the application in and the landowner and whatever. But from the section one O six points of view, um we did go once to the historical district council to try and get them to as involved in the section as it's, and this shows us exactly why a section one O six agreement should be drafted. The um, at the moment, they're drafted in such a way that it says um, lands will go to, uh, well, because the way the local authority has been drafted, and it's like lands will go to the um developer, will place lands um through a management company unless the developer wishes to get into a discussion with the lower authority. I understand that that isn't how it's done in Oxfordshire, Northamptonshire, and Milton Keynes and other authorities, where it swung around the other way, that lands would go to the local authority being town or district or or um um in our case, New Buckinghamshire Council. If no other person was to take it on, then it would go to a management company. The way that they're they're acting is so retrograde for localism and so negative to us. That's my view. Um, but I understand other local authorities do it. And the one development where, to be fair, um, they did, that officers now come back to Buckinghamshire Council. Um, now, she was away, she's come back now, uh, was Bury Fields um um in Aylesbury. Um, with Bury Fields is the only development that I can think of where they actually hit all the targets. And I think um till Stan corrected that it was wrote in section one O six, she worked on, she did it the other way round. Um, which was a proactive section one O six to try and get as much out of it. Now, we need to get really friendly with the the officers and we need to convince the the local authority about the localism of this. There's nothing else. What I've learned is I know more than I did and I need to learn more than I possibly take in. But but I hope that I've done you all right on that, but nothing you've said, John, is different. But I do know where we go with this. And I think that's for the town clerk to say is where he goes with this now, because I think my correspondence is now with the council. I think it's now for the town clerk, who's our principal officer, to deal with that correspondence and and take any appropriate conversations forward, because I can't as a Buckinghamshire councillor represent this council. I represent you in what I did. I think, unless town clerk corrects me, now it's for the town clerk to pick that up and do the conversations. Would you agree, Paul?
Yeah, absolutely. Next next stage is for me to get in touch and have a more formal conversation.
Yeah, and and.
And I hope it's not exactly the same.
Yes. But at least we now know what you're up against.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Robin, for that that report. There's one thing that jumps out after I read through the second page where they were talking about perhaps using the Emberton Way building, if it's small, it could be expanded. You pointed out there's a covenant on the land. Their reply is, we deal with restricted covenants all the time. There are ways to get around them, which to me is absolutely disgraceful, being publicly admitted by the developer. Well, I can't believe I've read that.
Well, that's what they said. I gave him a copy of the minutes. They could have come back and challenged them before they come here. And they said that they did come back to me and say we've received them. Um, I think what they mean is they would find a legal way of 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 um um meeting the person who owns the covenant. I think that's what they mean. They don't mean they get by it by some illegal means. I think they mean say the person who owns, the covenant has legal weight with the person who owns it. That person clearly has a financial interest in that land, because that's another mistake, that it was, Emberton Way ended up in the situation it was, which is without recanting it, for people who might not know, it was originally going to be a football pitch with a changing rooms and whatever. And because of the planning authorities' actions and and not actions in bringing that forward when they adopted the land, it ended up formed by the way, which is why we are where we are with the scale. That's the brief history of it. So so I do think they would go to the landowner and and negotiate with the person who owns the legal tenure of that land, which is, though it's in the responsibility of now Buckinghamshire Council, the person who owns the covenant owns what goes on there and the covenants put on it so that they can profit from that covenant. Um, so that's what I think they meant, Chairman, not that they would find some illegal way around it. And I'm not a lawyer, but that's what I would think they meant when they said that. And and I can't say that they said they were going to do something wrong.
Well, it's in writing in the agenda pack, so it's now public in public domain, so people will make what they wish of that. So thank you very much for the report, Robin. Thank you, Catherine, for taking the notes at that meeting.
That wasn't there, Cap.
It wasn't there?
It wasn't.
No, she wasn't there.
Robin's notes.
They're my notes. They're very good, were they? They're very good notes. You're very impressive. The best notes you've ever seen from me, weren't they?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Robin. Um, an update is this the London side proposal of ten calling applications is attached before soon. Yeah. Again, thank you, Catherine. And a lot of work this last last month. Any comments on that? Thank you, no? Well, we've already mentioned about when the next Buckinghamshire Council meetings are, as you know, the agenda's not posted yet, but specific sites on the seven. And what for the?
Oh, the note for the seventh debate, yes, there is.
Nothing on that, no, so that's. Right, um, item ten, it's not on our bit, but um Paul and I wanted to get this BP licensing out of the way. Um, that'll update for you, Paul.
Yeah, thank you, because I said in the moment at full council last week, I put it in the agenda for planning. Um, so we've withdrawn out from opposing the license for BP um because it appeared that we were putting the council too much liability of costs if we went ahead, particularly not having Sheena available to help us get it through properly. So to protect the council, that helps.
It's a completely pragmatic decision because the two um other objectives, they withdrew immediately after the court hearing. Once they were told they could be liable for the other party's costs, thousands of pounds. Um, it's moved on now. There's a new licensing committee. They've got new licensing rules and done that. At the time we did it, it was the right time to do it, but it's now, it it's history. It's another country now. Robin?
Though it's not the decision we want here, it's the right decision, and the town clerk's representing the council correctly. Um, what you will find with a licensing policy which went through Buckinghamshire Council, which agreed, it's a whole council licensing policy, which is why it challenged, if you recall, when we discussed it, it challenged our limited time, which means that all licenses in Buckinghamshire have to be in conformity. They have to legally do that because they are one council and the districts, through the action of the secretary of state in allowing the council to proceed, abolish. This is going to be a theme that we need to study, because they won't be the only thing that goes into conformity um going forward. Entwined mention section one O six. I think I thank the town clerk and the chairman for what they said. We live and learn, but it doesn't stop you. Um, I did write on one application I was going to get involved in, and by the time I got the legal reasons, whatever, apart from turning up um and actually finding legal reasons to break it in committee as a member, it's quite difficult and they always have really professional people there and they do a great, I watched one the other day, they do a great job of undismarning a councillor if they want to, a lawyer. Um, so I think we've done the right thing. And I think we do have to be minded that when this comes up um for twelve months, if there's an issue within this license, that's when I think we can then raise questions that the license isn't being acted as it was agreed. And then we can go to the licensing committee and say, at that point, we'd be better using our time and energy and our offices. If if, hopefully it's going to be all right, but if we found that um people were um causing stress to the neighbours, that would be something which we should raise. And I would imagine that the the free Buckinghamshire councils would be only too pleased to do that. And if they don't, of course, I would do it in any case. Um, but um, you know, and if they know I'm going to do it, they're more likely to do it in any case. So um, but I think that's where we go. Um, and and I thank everyone for their intense support for the decision.
Thank you. Any yeah, any further licensing applications, of course, will return to the committee, but we just wanted to get that out of the way. So thank you for that. Um, enforcement, does anyone have any new breaches? Council, Rob?
Uh, before we even consider any new breaches, Chair, what about all the old breaches that are still outstanding? I'm not sure how many we currently stand at, but I think this is substantial number. I don't know if the club can give us some guidance.
Catherine?
I've printed off the ones that were outstanding, but I didn't count them. But um, yeah, I would imagine that there's probably close on twenty that we've opened, but I've never, we never told if they're closed. So we don't get any feedback unless we demand it. So if members would like, I can list them and write a letter and see if enforcement admin can at least say if they've been closed and why. That would be a start, having a having a why, because we often don't find out if it has been closed, why it's been closed.
Yeah, it's very interesting. The Towns and Parishes forum, I intended, we were encouraged as towns and parishes to report any potential enforcement breaches. So they want us to do the reporting, but they they don't, as Catherine says, they don't always come back. Robin?
I did have a trip into enforcement the other day, um, because I go that I haven't tried the lifts out for a day. And um, so I went up to floor nine and met them and discussed various issues. What I am aware of is that they've got a will to try and turn the corner and and that that what happened was um from the administration of the district council pyramid um approach to staffing left them with lots of cases, um which are historic. They've got a will to turn around. And they also have said that what they want to do is get into a situation where they'll come and talk to the town and parishes about how they're going to do it. I believe that the reason they haven't got to do that now is because they're trying to get through this list of applications. I have been to cabinet, I have been to council and asked questions on these things. There comes a point where you can get what I call bullying without frailty, uh with frailty, because, you know, these people are working really very hard. And they didn't cause the problems that they're trying to solve. They've come in to actually try and solve them. So I don't agree with where we are, but I do think we have to give the new head of the department chance to actually make some enrols in it. She hasn't been imposed that long. Uh, and and she's got all of North Buck to sort out. And if you imagine how many we got here, multiply that across across the whole of the Vale area, which I really just shows you what a success Aggavale was and how when um we went through and made all those decisions to get rid of quality officers all those years ago, what for the, to lower the council tax, what an absolute success that's been. Um, 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 and now those decisions for fiscal reasons were really well thought out, which I objected to at the time. Um, but I was obviously didn't know what I was talking about, but that's how we are.
Again, North Bucks heads heads the lead, because we were told at the same forum that compared with South Bucks, for every one enforcement that reported there, we reported four. So, Martin, can't you try?
Yes, at the uh bottom of Page Hill footpath onto Stratford Road, they seem to have, um, give it clear, seem to have cleared one of the old hard standings of a farm unit.
Oh.
Which has been there for a long time, but.
On your side of the path and at the bottom, was the hard standing that the site had.
Yeah, well, exactly. But they seem to have brushed it and cleaned it and edged it. And I just wondered what they think they're going to do with it, because, you know, apart from another parking space, it's seems a strange thing to do for uh where when they could have been getting on with some better things.
Something or other in it, because we used to have terrible problems with leaking water from that area. I don't think there's a spring above it.
Isn't that where the area of that funny drain is, where the the sump and then you've got the overflow? But anyway, um, just a, it's not uh anything to breach, but it's uh, if if anybody had any information about it.
They've read a right mess of progress.
Oh, the poor old progress, yes.
We've got best patchwork footpaths in Buckinghamshire, Page Hill. Oh, pretty good, Robin. Uh, council ladies, Frank?
Thank you, um, Chair. And I was, we've we've mentioned at a previous meeting um about the aircon units on the veteran surgery on the high street. Um, on, I don't know if if any of the officers have come and had a look, but it does seem that they've been moved from the side. Whether that's just while they're doing the works on the pub, um. Yeah, no, they've been moved from the side. You can see where they were on the side, as well.
No, they were on the front of the building.
They are now on the front of the building. They weren't before. They've been moved to the front of the building.
From the side.
From the side, from the front. That's that's the question that I think that needs to be asked of the the um.
Thank you.
The veteran surgery.
Conservation area, is it listed on the bill as well?
Um, as to whether they're going to go back once the Grand Junction works have finished.
I mean, Catherine's, sorry. If I'd like to be pulled.
Yes.
Yeah.
I can tell, I can tell feeling that if they were on the side, then they were actually on Grand Junction territory.
Yes.
They were overhanging somebody else's land.
Any other, sorry, Robin, breaches?
I think this is something we ought to do when the breaches are unmentioned. Um, I think it would be worth us asking um, is there any likelihood of the roadworks um to the Audi being completed in April? I say this because they were going to be completed um nearly every month till April for the past six months. And and we need to ask whether they're likely to be completed, they said they were going to be. We also need to ask them um when they're going to complete the roadworks, which were agreed, I think, um, from the roundabout.
Now, this isn't enforcement, Robin, this will come up later on, the road road things.
Okay, we'll do it then, but I can say it all again.
Thank you. We'll revisit that. Uh, we are coming back to you anyway on item twelve, Robin. Trees, year of the tree, which was um moved here from the uh town council.
You on that now?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll talk again then. Um, well, basically, you recall that we were going to take this to council, but we were right in the midst of Covid and it got delayed and then went to the next council meeting. And we didn't define an action, which meant we defined an action at the previous planning meeting, which means we're now at April um when this should have been defined the year. I think what we agreed was to um, we very much fit in with some of the applications we've got coming through with trees to be removed, to be maintained and to actually um it seems a long time ago we discussed this, because it was at the beginning, end of last year, to have it for this year. Um, that we were going to make it the year of the tree. I don't think we still can do that in the sense that we've got a white pine going to go out in my late mother-in-law's property. Um, it's going to be chopped down for no good reason or maintained.
We haven't got that decision.
We haven't got that decision, no, but um um they these things always start with a conversation and end up with a tree being laid down, don't it? Um, so we do need to do that and we've lost all these trees. I think what I would hope we do is use the good offices of our friends in the Buckingham Society and this council together to actually sing a little song about the trees, because we have lots of songs sung about we're going to plant five hundred thousand wicks, twix, you know, twigs for trees. Each one of those won't take up any amount of carbon as what our substantial trees in our town suck out of the air every year. So I think we need to get everyone involved in Buckingham in, if there's a tree application, speaking about it. If there's something to be done, being interested in it, because if we don't do this, as we said in council, which Council Anthony Robb supported me, was that we will find in five to 10 years' time that our landscape will be somewhat diminished. And all these trees will have been left because they may or may not be prejudiced to a house which was built next door to them. So that's why I just hope we can do some press releases around it and actually talk about this. I think it's though it's a council motion, it's all of us now.
Right. If I could just bring Town Clerk Paul in here on the action, this Paul, we've got an outstanding invitation to Neil Passmore and his career to meet up with us. Have you got any further to report on that?
Yes, very outstanding. So we hit a bit of a button with those above Neil wanting to talk to us first. I have got a meeting before the next planning committee with, I think, the relevant manager. They have switched around a little bit. So I'll be able to report back on that and where we are.
Thank you. That's helpful. Counselor Harvey, John?
Okay, with regards to this being our Year of the Tree, I've got four proposals to make. One is that we should, with every planning application that is going to involve the removal of an existing tree, could be a small one, could be a large one, that we would expect, we can't enforce, obviously, but that we would expect every tree removed to be replaced by six decent-sized trees somewhere. And when I say decent size, I mean like three meters wide. That's the size tree that once I planted. When the tree planting a few weeks ago. Secondly, again to the first two full counts, I think we should declare Buckingham a love tree zone. Those of you who might remember, there were many cities in the world that had nuclear free zones, most of which was a bit of because like there wasn't much nuclear air oxygen. City councils and living near pretty city, you know, and we had research stations within the area and so on. But I think we call ourselves a love tree zone and then use that and in a sense grow that as to what that actually means over forthcoming months and years. And we put it on our letterhead, on our press release, that sort of thing. But I think that needs full counsel, obviously, to root that out. Thirdly, I think we should seek to get some sort of spokesperson from the insurance business to explain to us the logic that they're using as to why they want to cut down trees rather than actually do something proper without any witness from the substance, a problem we've seen several times and well, one opposite the Mitre and on Page Hill and so on. I think let's get somebody in, let's begin to understand where they're coming from so that we can protect them with that understanding. And fourthly, I think we should join the Woodland Trust and become a sort of member, corporate member or whatever, and just support the work that they're doing to support trees around the country. So those are my four proposals that I'm making. Just to recap, every planning application, six trees for one. We declare ourselves a luxury zone, we ask for an insurance speaker and we join the Woodland Trust.
Thank you. Thank you very much, John. Let's touch on it.
Technically, we've agreed at council that we are this is the Year of the Tree. So I don't, and it was difficult enough at full council, it was quite a fractious affair, if you record, well, actually actual meeting, where not, although everyone voted for it, there was some conjecture from different members on how we would define that. I seek advice and town clerk, because I think what we could do here is define our mission i- in respect to that, in the light where we do. It was deemed to come back here. It wasn't deemed to go to the environment committee because that means we can delay it to 2022 if we want to or 2023. Because I'm conscious that we're in April now and this was meant to have been decided earlier in the year. So I don't have any problem taking on some of the points that Counselor Harvey says as aspirations of what we would do. I think all the points that you propose would, something that we would then, as we've agreed the principle, we would then recommend them to the environment committee as actions that they would seek us to do. Because we got to work in unison in the council. We do with the issues here because it was, it was the cutting down of the trees which stimulated the conversation, not the actions of the environment committee. So this is where it started, why it's come back here. And the chairman's been good enough to move it forward onto the agenda. So I'd seek advice in the clerk whether those actions can be agreed under this. Because I don't see any of them are unfair, or whether we agreed to do a press release about it and make a recommendation about those actions to the environment committee to be able to progress them. Because we'll get a charge back to us saying, well, that should come under environment. Because they're very much things like what you're saying, I think should be done at the viral committee, but would be all actions within the Year of the Tree, showing that we're considering all these things and discussing it. It's not to block you, John, it's just that that we should have made those amendments to it when we took it through council and we should have said it then to add it in because we got into that conjecture about trees, didn't we, which was unfortunate and and we didn't have an amendment. And that's why I asked the town clerk if that's a reasonable assumption.
Yeah, I think the reason it came to planning was because, back to planning, was because of this issue around planning and trees and the concern we've had around this table many, many times about TPOs and Buckinghamshire Council responding to already said, to the insurers. So, I mean, joining the Woodland Trust is probably a full council thing and just glossing their website, I'm not sure we can. We can investigate that. The sorry, my mind's gone blank on the other three. Six for one trees?
Well, surely the thing to do is take, take John's, if we agree John's four recommendations, just make them recommendations and then we report to the council and the council comment.
Or you could make the recommendations direct to plan to environment, which would be quicker.
Okay, they can take the decision, can't they?
Yeah, if it's been led to me.
Either way, we need a second.
Yeah, yeah.
I think on the forum I'm looking forward, the insurance speaker is Jermaine DeWitt. That's, that's an issue of us. I think we can decide as a parliament tonight that we will write somebody here in the future that explains to us.
Yeah.
And that ensures things about trees.
Right, propose that now?
Yeah.
Second over, Fran. That's Fran. All those in favour? Yes, that, that's a unanimous.
Okay, secondly, as a parliament, I think we can also decide that we will seek, whenever a planning application comes, comes our way, they involve to cut down trees, that we will seek that the developer, whoever the developer is, plants six substantial trees for everyone that they cut down.
That's a good one.
Not necessarily on that side.
Not necessarily on that side.
Not necessarily on that side, somewhere else. You know, it could be on our land, up at Lake Hill.
Or somebody else's.
I don't mind where, I will, I will help facilitate that if we can. But I just think as a way to refer to the tree.
You're proposing that?
Yeah.
All those in favour? Oh, sorry, Karen in Blackton.
I was just thinking about this planting of trees. They could be a bit random. Is there any land the town council owns that could be put forward as a creation for other wood?
We've got the cemetery, which we can plant, we can actually get some trees in there.
But I think that the short answer is no, we are really low on available land to trees.
We've got Vysom.
Anyway, we have a proposal on second. All those in favour? That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There's against, one against, abstentions. Thank you.
All right, and the third one about a luxury zone, I think that's something we can take back to full councils.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's, I don't think it's an environment committee thing. I think that's a kind of council, full council, why think for us to decide? And today, and then as part of our plan, we will see that.
May not be more logical to package that together with the Woodlands Trust membership and send them to environment.
Let's be the first council in the country to declare ourselves a luxury zone.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll make that then. And then other councils might launch on us and do something similar. And then the idea will then rip and change and develop over time.
Everyone agree with that?
We'll go to environment.
Yeah, to, to environment.
Yeah.
All those in favour? Oh, sorry. Second environmental, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Against, abstentions, one abstention from the man. Thank you, thank you for that.
Before we move on to, Chairman, can I ask that we, that we do a press lease of what we've agreed? Because we can say that's what we've agreed with committee after the motion, so that we actually get some purchase on the fact that we've actually done it because we can do that because it's full councils agreed it. And, and that's where it's come back. It voted unanimously to withstand, but abstain, which the minutes say they abstained. To abstain from supporting it. So that's been agreed and that's why it's come back here. So I don't think it's unwieldy of us to actually now go out and say what we said. Are they going to wait till September? Are we going to say it's the Year of the Tree? So I think that shows some purchase forward because we've done that. And the other bits that go to environment, we can then, when that goes to the environment committee, we can then get a second bite of the cherry. Hopefully that the environment committee will say all those other things that we want to do, which brings it back up again and reinforces our intentions of the Year of the Tree. And I think that that's, that's a perfectly good thing to do. If we don't do it, well, we might as well not agree the motion.
No, no, Counselor again.
Yeah, I think we just, on, on really what Robin's been talking about, about Year of the Tree, I think one of the reasons that people were sort of prevaricating when it came to full council was, what does it mean? And I see what Counselor Harvey's now said was actually putting that, making something concrete out of, also that's.
That's six trees.
That, that's a practical outworking of that original idea of having the Year of the Tree. Because what does that mean? What does Year of the Tree mean? Or for instance, what does love tree zone mean? You know? I don't know. That's, I wasn't sure if I understood about that because I couldn't quite get my head around what it meant. But, you know, we've got to have practical outworkings. What does it mean, the Year of the Tree? Otherwise it's meaningless, isn't it? And I think that's what's helpful tonight in those thoughts.
I, I think, just to, just to comment back if I can, one, you put a motion to council. If you want to write a motion which actually said everything, the motion is to get the, something to do. What was unfortunate about the meeting is that we spent more time talking about it than actually, we didn't as a council do what we did tonight, which is what you said, Madam Mayor. We spent a lot of time discussing about it. I think the motion was drafted and accepted and actually stated the reason why we would have the Year of the Tree. So I think it's unfair to say that, saying it. What was, was, was people's opinion around it, very much like you said, I think with the gap, it meant that we've come forward with some better options. It would have been much nicer if we'd didn't define tightly enough at the meeting what we wanted to do, which is unfortunate to spend a lot of time talking about why and voted for it and didn't define. I think the minutes say that and the web, and I'll remember what it said if you go and watch the meeting, what people said's a record.
Counselor, ladies?
I was just going to say, as, as, but a mess, and says, and Counselor Harvey's proposal and put, you know, put the expression, put some meat on the bone.
Put some branches on the trees.
Could I just, members of some, some of you, some of you have been here for more than three hours now in meetings. So if we could just move the side of London, decide, Counselor Stutchfield's proposed a press lease. Is that our agreement or is that? Okay, agreed? All in favour? That's it. But we can't at this point say about joining the Woodlands Trust. Hasn't gone in front of environment. Right, just to finish off with the trees then, updated list of felling applications. Same, thank you for those, Catherine. And to note for information, three Lombardy poplars at Berendine's Way that we felt they're unsafe, that's going to be carried out by Buckinghamshire Council. Some on their boundary. And to note for information, the Royal Latin School's got a fellow lark which is actually rotten. It's not a preserved tree, which the Royal Latin at the time believed it was. Thank you. Quarterly update. Thank you very much again for that on the section 106. Applications and progress. Mr Rowley also reports discussions are ongoing, reviews of the balance from any distracted builds, car park. So that's just a matter of thought. Thank you. Matt is to report. Robin, you want to mention about the road?
I just would ask that in support of things one's doing, if you could write to try to Buckinghamshire, ask them for when the date will finally be that they do the work on the highways to, by the Audi. It's been going on for some time. Every time it gets close to being completed, it's either HS2 or East West Rail takes priority over the A41, which is an arterial route to the coast. And secondly, that we ask Buckinghamshire Council if they're likely to live in lifetime that they'll actually do the last section of the road, which they agreed to do some tremendous amount of years ago, which is the section from Badgers of the Bletchley Roundabout to the Badgers Junction, which they have not done. And, and, and all these things seem to be full fail of East West Rail and, and, and whatever. And that seems to be a good reason for dropping our roadsworks every time. If they don't do it soon, it, and I don't mean this to the poor people of Steep or Clayton who have got far more problems with roadworks than we have, to be fair to them. But, but our roads, if they keep leaving them long enough, will be heading towards the same conditions of roads in Steep or Clayton. And they've got some way to go to there as bad as them, but they'll be heading that way.
We'll note that. Robin, thank you very much. Any other damage to purpose redundant side?
On roads again, West Street is atrocious and they've painted yellow lines through the potholes. It's dreadful. It's absolutely dreadful.
Yeah, thank you.
And they're the wrong lines.
Wrong colour.
No, they're the wrong lines. They've, they've put in, they're supposed to have certain lines, I think they're narrow ones.
Conservation.
Conservation lines. And they put in the ones which are for anywhere else. They went in a conservation zone and put in the thick lines, which we've had with them before. We'll only have to wait at least three months and they'll wear out and then they'll come back again and put the wrong lines in again. But I think that's worth.
It effectively narrows the road as well, doesn't it? Because people look at the yellow lines and like, yeah, they, they drive the middle of the way.
So anything else to report? The only thing I've got here is that the four-day closure of Stow Road is not happening now. They've, they've decided not to film this week, but Stow gave all their staff the four days off so they could take some, some leave. And so Stow will be closed, still be closed during that portion of the year. Thank you. Chairman's items for information, I have no more data. Next meeting, Monday the night May following the interim meeting. Thank you very much, everyone, for your attendance tonight.
Anyway, John, this will actually get something done about.